05 to order Cindy Roque, please.
Councilmember Coke.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Ready?
Yeah.
Moving down the agenda, the first thing that we want to do is welcome our new city council member with us this evening, John Temple. John is returning to the council now for the third time. Welcome, John.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. We look forward to your participation with us. With that, we will also welcome the members of the audience that are here with us tonight. Cindy, do we have folks with us?
It appears we have seven or eight, yes.
Okay, great. Well, welcome. I would just remind you that if you're here for an item that is on the agenda, we would ask that you wait for that item to come up and raise your hand and indicate to Cindy that you have comments you want to share with the council. If that's what you want to do, if you're here for an item that is not on the agenda, the procedure would be the same. You would raise your hand, but you would do that under the public comments section under public communications. So. And I would just remind everyone, because we are on Zoom now rather than in a in-person meeting, that we would ask you to make your comments and then at that point, we would mute you. It is not a debate with the city council or with other audience members. It's merely an opportunity to provide your comments and we will take those into consideration then in our deliberation of whatever item is on the agenda. So. With that, we will move to the next item on the agenda, and that is the agenda approval. Jim, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No changes this evening.
Okay. Councilmembers, any changes? If not, then we have a motion to approve the agenda.
So move Evan.
Second, Martin.
We have a motion and second all in favor say, or send your vote, please.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Ready?
Yeah.
Temple?
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah.
Motion passed. Moving on to public communications, we have one item under public communications this evening, and that is a presentation on the Central Iowa Water Trails Project.
Yes, this is Jim, and this evening, we're going to have a presentation on the proposed Central Iowa Water Trails initiative, and this is basically effort between several metro communities and counties in central Iowa to put together a nonprofit corporation for the management of the Central Iowa Water Trails. We had initially planned on having this presentation on the work session, but we had quite a few closed sessions we needed to deal with, so we're going to go ahead and do it here under public communications. And so I know they're prepared with a presentation, and I'm not quite sure who's going to do it this evening, but if you want to introduce yourself and do the presentation, that'd be great.
I need to know who it is because they can't talk until I know who they are.
I don't know who's with us this evening. Could you maybe Hannah and Nikki? Hannah and Nicky Severson.
There we go. They are.
All right.
Great.
So you guys can all hear me?
We can.
Okay, and Nikki, are you on?
I am on. Thank you for having us.
Thank you, guys. We really appreciate it and the time for allowing us to come and present to you and also your patience as we navigate this virtual world. Just a few things, just housekeeping items before we start. One, we're going to present on the 28E and then pause and answer questions regarding that, and then we'll get into the board makeup, and then after that, pause and questions, just because it's hard to see what questions are during the presentation. Additionally, just a note, I know we sent you all the original sites that were in the feasibility study, but when Jim Sanders met with us, we really consolidated, and there are three access points for Johnston, the 70th and 86th Street site, Merle Hay, and then Lou Clarkson. So just a few housekeeping notes, so we'll just get started. Before we dive into the details of the governance process, of which Mayor Dierenfeld is the chair, I want to just take a step back and realize how this all started and why we're here. In 2016, the NPO adopted a regional water trails plan that then led to the engineering study to determine how we could use conservation and recreation efforts to activate our waterways for residents and visitors. The study identified 86 amenities over 150 miles throughout a three-country county region, and they're very varying levels of amenities, some as simple as creating a pathway for fishing or waiting, and others as large and complex as whitewater rafting. Beginning in 2016 and continuing today, this effort has been a collaborative community effort with input in dozens of discussion groups, town halls, and presentation. And throughout every step of the process, there have been participation from elected officials, city staff, and a multitude of community groups and interested residents. Through each of these conversations, the vision is clear. We have an opportunity to activate our waterways as a regional amenity to improve our environment, enhance quality of life, spur economic development, and attract visitors and workforce. Some cities like Johnston have already started on their amenities, and we really applaud that initiative. But this project is more about what one city can do. It's really about growing together. So why is this important now, given all that cities are confronted with? When we started the bike trails, that really started as a grassroots, one city at a time, one county at a time, and what we've seen is an organic network that has now knitted together. But as we look to the water trails, a universal user experience for our residents and visitors alike is incredibly important. Safety, maintenance, a universal user experience marketing, these are all reasons why we need one entity to help manage this as a region. So when we look at the goals of the individual cities, let's first look at the overall goals. First, there's safety. There's been 19 deaths on the low-head dams since their inception, but there's another level of safety. And that is, we're not Colorado with the rocky shorelines. We need to be able to access on and off safely here in Iowa with a holistic access network. Additionally, economic development, we've seen what outdoor recreation and our trail system can do for economic development. But now, more than ever, we need another thing, and that is our water trails, even with the you know shortened summer and the droughts, we've seen what's happened in Johnston and how many people have come to do your new attractions, and we know that this will impact our economic development. Our first study showed that we will have between 20 to 50 million of direct spending within that first year and increasing year after year. Secondly, we look at attracting workforce and tourism. I think this is why you see the business community alongside us right now so strongly. To keep thriving as a region, we need a reason to bring people here. We have a great quality of life, great education system, and affordable housing, but people are looking for something extra because they can decide where to live and then find a great paying job. This allows us to attract more people to our community because of these amenities. And then environmental conservation. Every single one of these projects has water quality initiatives built into it, but it's also allowed us to leverage additional water quality money through federal grants and use that money upstream for water quality. And then outdoor recreation, again and again, we hear that that's what residents want in their community. We can go to the next page. So what are the benefits of a regional entity? One is that cohesive user experience, whether you're in Johnston, Des Moines, or Polk County. We need people to be able to identify where they are. But also, it's a consistent long-term maintenance of being able to offer the same user experience and the same level of maintenance from one area to the other. Additionally, regional marketing, when we look at our paved trail system, I believe we have one of the best products out there, but we've missed out on an opportunity to market regionally to people outside of the Midwest. This allows us to do that and to attract events. And once one person comes for one day, they usually stay for three, visiting different amenities throughout the region. Public education and notification, we want people to understand what the water quality and water safety risk and what that means. This entity will be in charge of that. Streamline communication with the DNR, and then on-water maintenance, whether you don't know where you're paddling, but if you need to report a strainer or have some log jams removed, you'd be able to have one call to have that maintenance taken care of. And then funding back to the jurisdictions for maintenance and capital improvements through our business plan and additional fundraising that will be brought on by the entity. So what are the benefits to the Johnston residents? First, the additional amenities, which we've seen the great success that we've had with those first couple. Additionally, access to different experiences throughout the region. They may go and try one in West Des Moines or downtown Des Moines, but always come back to their one in their backyard. Enhance the quality of life. And also increase visitors leads to additional funding for cities, whether that's through spending, taxes, hotel motel tax. With that, I'll turn it over Nikki to watch us through the, walk us through the operating structure.
Thank you, Hannah, and thanks for having us this evening. My name's Nikki Severson. I'm a consultant with the governance process here, and I just want to walk you through the process of how we got to where we are and then where we're at right now to get your feedback. So building from the momentum of the engineering study, an interim LLC and leadership board was formed to help guide the team through the capital campaign and creating this final structure. The Water Trails team engaged a national parks and recreation experts to help figure out what's the best long-term operating structure for a system like this. This 150 miles of waterways across so many jurisdictions does not exist in Iowa or the nation, and so we wanted to figure out what works best for Iowa. So from there, they conducted interviews, surveys, and small discussion groups with regional mayors and city managers. And based on that feedback and really understanding what works well in central Iowa, what are our values? Those individuals recommended a nonprofit or conservancy model to help us with, that worked with public partners. And the idea here was that there'd be a strong focus on the public-private funding mix and taking that recommendation is what led us to where we are here. Next page, please. So at that point, Scott Racker with the Robert D. and Billy Ray Center at Drake and I were brought on board to help figure out from this recommendation, how do we put it together? And so we formed a working group made up of the regional city managers and many other experts, including the DNR and the conservation boards in the county, and charged that group with helping us build consensus first on the organizational documents. What will this 28E look like when we're looking at maintenance and standards and the funding distribution formula? And also getting their input along with the governance committee on what does this board look like and how, you know, creating the bylaws and articles of incorporation, of course, but also making sure there's consensus on that representation and on that structure. Next page, please. Thank you. So as a part of that process, we conducted individual interviews starting last July with regional city managers and our county supervisors. We've had updates to the executive committee and governance committee of the Water Trails. We conducted focus groups with the private sector partners. They've been really supportive of the capital campaign. But as we're charting forward, we wanted to make sure we also had their commitment long-term for funding the system. Big part of this is making sure we're informing our elected officials, which is why we're here tonight to get your feedback and to make sure you're understanding the process and where we are. And with that working group, we also facilitated sessions to help build understanding and consensus on where we are today, and those sessions happen September through December of last year. So to take a step back, just, yes. Oh, okay. I'll keep going. I thought someone had something there. Um, to look at how this all fits together with the Central Iowa Water Trails, we have 86 amenities through 12 cities and three counties. The regional sites, there's 81 of those, and then five downtown sites that are in or near downtown Des Moines. And then there'll be this new Central Iowa Water Trails nonprofit, which will oversee the regional network. Next page, please. Thank you. When we look at the funding, and we're going to get into the details of this as we move on, but those regional sites, the maintenance will be by the jurisdiction. The downtown sites have its own kind of funding formula based on revenues, and we'll share that with you. And then part of that gets put back into the region. The Central Iowa Water Trails new nonprofit has its, will have its own budget, which includes things like staffing, marketing, water safety, and that will be funded by a public-private mix. And then the jurisdiction support is based on three weighted factors, and we'll discuss that as we move forward here. So when we brought the working group together, we really spent some time understanding what is the role of this new regional entity? What are they charged to do? And as we're looking at who's on the board, what will they be charged with doing? So Hannah touched on a number of these things, but just to emphasize the main priority is to make sure we have a seamless cohesive network of water trails. And that includes design standards, signage, wayfinding, maintenance, how are we dealing with safety, all of that as the water flows. They'll oversee public education and notification system for the water trails and be that one point of reference both for users and for jurisdictions. And they'll oversee the marketing strategy, host the regional events, act as a single point of contact for DNR, and this was an idea that was brought up by the working group to really help streamline things for jurisdictions. There'll be an independent audit and a report back to the jurisdictions. Again, that on-water maintenance, as Hannah mentioned, and the budget, collecting revenue and allocating regional funds. The next thing that the team got into with, as a working group, was just the general agreement, term, scope, and definitions. So as it looks right now, it's a perpetual agreement with termination notification due by July 1st with a two-year sunset to give the organization and the network time to prepare and react. They came to terms on what is a water trail, what is a water trail project? And also, we determined that all of the water trail projects will be owned by each jurisdiction, and therefore liability is under the jurisdiction and covered by Iowa code, which was very helpful. When looking at the maintenance and standards, those original consultants gave quite a lot for us to look at, and an operations and maintenance committee of the Central Iowa Water Trails helped streamline that and brought that back to this working group. Confirming that the jurisdictions are responsible for the maintenance and the repair of their own access points. Again, the governing entity will oversee on-water, on-rout. But then when we're on land on those access points, the best practices that were determined related to the hardscape, the landscape, turf maintenance, what happens after flooding? What happens if there's vandalism? What should lighting look like? They also adopted an inclusion design tool to make sure we have considerations when we're looking at restroom facility design, accessibility, signage, and safety. And also determined within this document is that emergency response will be addressed within the statewide mutual aid compact and also any local mutual aid agreements. The funding, and we'll talk through this here. First, we want to take a bit of a look at the downtown sites, and there's an estimated business pro forma that was analyzed a couple of years ago that really looks at what's our usage numbers and how can this be a self-sustaining model? Once that revenue comes back, the net revenue will be split between a maintenance endowment and then reinvestment in the network. When looking at, the second thing we want to show you tonight is the regional operations and administrative expenses. And what's included in that budget are marketing, public education, and notification system, the water safety and monitoring, development services, lobbyists, and other administrative things. What was discussed is that the budget will be covered with a revenue split, 70% by jurisdictions, 30% private fundraising support. So what you're seeing here is a snapshot of that pro forma, and that was done with very conservative usage numbers. Looking at a four-hour travel span, and we think that we'll have even more people traveling from greater distance, but again, we wanted very conservative numbers to get us started here. And in the expenses, it includes the maintenance and operations of those downtown sites, those five sites near or in downtown Des Moines, as well as the revenue, which includes equipment rental, adventure park concessions fees. There'll be a zip line there, which we see as a big revenue generating tool. And once that's all up and running, in the first year, we see a net total of 23,000, building up again very conservatively by year five to over 200,000. Of those net gains, half will be put back into an endowment for capital and extreme maintenance, and one will be put back into reinvestment into the region. Then looking at that regional nonprofit, and what is that budget looking like? We had the Water Trails team estimate out a budget for the next three years, varying a little bit and hopefully getting a little more streamlined as things move on. But really, we're looking at about $1.1 million for the first year, which begins this July and runs through June of 2022. Next slide, please. When we look at how that split, when we're seeing public-private support, the ask of the jurisdictions and our public funding for that first fiscal year is 786,000, and that's what we're using as the basis as we look at the funding formula. So the conversation with the working group then, as we talked about, what's equitable? What makes sense was reflective of what we've seen in the region is that that funding formula would be based on three weighted factors. And that's the drainage area at 25%, our access points at 25%, and again, Johnston at three, and the population at 50%. So then how that breaks down, you can see here the organizations, thank you, that are involved, the jurisdictions that are involved. Looking at Johnston, it's roughly 25,000. You'll see those cities down there at the bottom at 5,000, that's Grimes, Mitchellville, Norwalk, Polk City. Those are cities that we refer to as our partner cities that don't have an access point, but see the value and being a part of this regional network. So should they opt in at that level? Then our jurisdiction support above the line, if you will, will go down. So our next steps on this 2080, on this portion of the agreement, we are following up with all the individual jurisdictions. We'd ask that you would review that 28E with your legal departments. It's, again, it's gained consensus through our city managers and our mayors. We're involved with that in December as well, but we know your legal departments will have some things that they'd like to check out as well. And we would love for those agreements to be signed by July. So before we get into the representation and the and how the governing documents look, we'll take any questions on the 28E portion.
Any questions for Nikki or Hannah?
Okay, this isn't your only chance, so we'll keep moving along, and then we can take questions on call as well, too. So the other big factor here is who's making these decisions and what's the representation like? And this is a process that we have been going through with the governance committee chaired by Mayor Dierenfeld as well as with the working group. So this is not as firm yet, and again, one reason why we're in front of you this evening. What we've gotten to this point is just a general board overview. Three-year terms that will be staggered initially, so we don't have one big drop-off in turnover in three years. No more than 30 members, because we think that's quite enough right there, and that the representation will reflect the funding mix. And this is something we heard loud and clear in our interviews this past summer, and we wanted to make sure that that was represented. So 70% of the representatives will be public representatives and 30% private. The jurisdiction reps will be elected officials appointed by the mayor, and the county representatives will be from the Board of Supervisors. The private representatives will be initially nominated by the Central Iowa Water Trails Executive Committee, and then moving forward by this new nonprofits executive committee. This board composition that you're seeing before you right now is definitely a draft status, and one thing we'd love your feedback on. So as it's drafted now, we'd have one representative from each city with an access point, so one elected official from Johnston, one collective rep from our partner cities, those that didn't have an access point but want to be a part of it. Two representatives from Polk County, and one each from Dallas and Warren Counties. Someone from the Polk County Conservation Board, a Great Outdoors Foundation representative, and then seven community leaders that reflect the private sector funding mix, and also the collective voice of the Regional Water Trails Network, and then DNR, who would be non-voting. Those private representatives would be nominated by the executive committee, as I mentioned, and we'd give consideration to individuals who reflect that private funding sector as well as Water Trails user groups and diverse communities. They would reside or work in Polk, Warren, or Dallas Counties. The executive committee, again, this is not confirmed either. But again, we want to put this out here and get your reaction to it. Nine members, the officers who hold two-year terms, as well as our committee chairs and the standing committees, our finance, operations, and maintenance, inclusion, and environmental conservation, and then the Great Outdoors Foundation representative, who would not hold office. So our next steps are we are making adjustments to the board composition based on feedback, and we'll share some of that feedback that we're hearing already with you. Our governance committee meets again next Friday, and we're taking all the feedback we're hearing from the jurisdictions back to them. We'll continue to finalize that structure and build consensus, form the new nonprofit. Then at that point, we'd ask that the appointments are made by mayors and boards of supervisors, and we'll begin meeting as this new organization in July of 2021, later, just in a few months, actually. So with that, we'll take some questions, and we will let you know some of the things that we do want your reaction to that are not on paper yet are that representation and what Des Moines is hoping for is another representative as well as you know, a spot on the executive board. And so we told them that we would put that back out to the different jurisdictions and see what everyone's thoughts were on that proposal. So in addition to questions on the overall what we shared, would love to hear your feedback on that representation mix as well.
So I think that, you know, from the perspective of the council member, some of them are probably hearing most of this information for the first time, and it's a lot of information. Which you might expect, since it's taken us, how long, 18 months to get to this point?
It's taken a while, and yes, and I also was talking very quickly tonight, too, so.
So I think maybe just to share a little perspective here, you know, I, you know, I I didn't think that I had a lot of familiarity with the conservancy approach to entities like this until I realized that Central Park in New York City is a conservancy, and I didn't, that didn't even, you know, make an impression on me until we started having these conversations. And if you think about it, if there wasn't a conservancy in Central Park in New York City, and those of you that have been there, you know, if you didn't have somebody overseeing that massive park and all of the different pieces of that massive park, I mean, it could just be, it could be chaos. So, you know, when I realized that, then the whole conservancy approach just made so much more sense to me. The other thing, of course, is that, you know, we've been very fortunate with our our bike trail system in Iowa and the way that it's developed, we've kind of piecemealed it together, and eventually the pieces all came together. But we would not have ever thought of doing that with our highway system in Iowa. And I'm hoping that we can avoid by taking, you know, a thoughtful approach to the water trails that we avoid some of the risk and the problems that we created with the bike trail system and use the highway system as a better model as we think about the water trail system here in central Iowa. So those are just some of the, you know, the kind of the thoughts that I've had in the back of my mind as I've you know, the kind of the thoughts that I've had in the back of my mind as I've continued to participate in in this discussion and and try to help guide the direction that we're going with it. But Nikki, again, kind of the 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 items that you want some feedback on this evening, because we are we are limited on time, even though we, even though we could probably talk for hours, which we have about all of this, but I think if we go back to the board composition, and if we could slide back to that, I don't know who's in control of the slide deck here.
Just, let's see, keep go, one more down, please. Thank you.
So, you know, the the composition of the governing board is is a challenge with, you know, all of our regional entities. And we've, you know, we've, we've identified problems with some in the past, we've tried to restructure them. We've tried to learn from, you know, one, one approach as we, you know, try and 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 reorganize or restructure other governing boards or or bodies. This one, I would say, is probably most closely modeled after Dart. Would you say that, Nikki and Hannah?
I I think we leaned on Dart a lot.
Yeah, I mean, it's a real hybrid approach, but I think we and Dart is one that, you know, we worked really hard. We took it from a structure that it had maybe seven or eight years ago that had been in place for some time and tried to try to restructure it in a way that gave broader representation across our region and gave everybody a seat at the table. So we kind of leaned heavily on that approach and in putting this composition together. But we are hearing some feedback from Des Moines in particular, they think, I mean, they they believe strongly that they should have two seats at the table and not just one, and can you give just a little background on that, Nikki or or Hannah, why why they believe that?
I believe they believe, they feel that way because they have the largest investment and the largest navigable water piece in there. And so when it comes to decisions of 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 that importance for maintenance and ongoing things, that's where they felt that that was necessary. Nikki, did I summarize that correctly?
Yes, I would say of the cities, they have the largest.
And one thing I know, we've, we've given a lot of information today, we have a governance meeting a week from Friday, and so, of course, when you have time to digest it, and if you have more things than what we discuss here, please send feedback to us, and we will make sure we share that with the committee.
And obviously, the council members here in Johnston can always communicate directly to me as well. And I can add to the governing committee, governance committee as well. So maybe, maybe rather than putting you all on the spot tonight about the representation of the governing board, I just know that this is, this is the current proposal, and there is some interest by the city of Des Moines to increase their representation by one, so that they would have two individuals at the table, based on the belief that since they have the largest investment, they should have an additional voice. What was the other thing that you wanted to remind me, the other thing that you pointed out?
That that was it, it was just really, you know, the working group had really strong, healthy conversations to bring us to consensus on the twenty-eight E, and Jim, we appreciate your your active participation in that. It's just as we're, we're still at some sticking points with the the board composition and want to make sure we're reflecting the region and what works best for the region as we come to consensus with the governance committee. So any feedback funnel to to Mayor Paula or back to us as you have a little more time to to digest and and process what this means for for the new entity.
Yeah, and Nikki, I I remember what the other one is, and that is that Des Moines is asking for a a guaranteed seat on the executive committee.
Yes, thank you. I'm glad you recall that as well, yes, the committee, and I I will say that this executive committee will not have, as it's written now, does not have as much authority as like the MPO executive committee that that does make a lot of action, which I think is what people are thinking of when they think of that executive committee, but it is a request for consideration by Des Moines as well.
And the the officers are selected how?
By the executive committee.
I mean, like the chair, the vice chair, secretary treasurer.
Oh, yes, that would be voted by the by the full board.
Right.
Thank you.
Mayor, one question I've got, and if it's appropriate to jump in here now or not.
Sure, sure.
So this councilman, Coke, one of the things that I've kind of wondered about as we put this regional structure together is, I think it's important that the cities, individual cities still retain the ability to hire whoever the the vendor or provider of, whether it be kayaks or canoes or whatever. I think that's really important, and it it's hard when we start getting into kind of the, some of these PowerPoints and, you know, who, what responsibilities are going to be, what, it it's not always clear to me what that, you know, who's going to have that retain that responsibility, and to me, I think this is, you know, it's it's kind of a, you know, as we, as, you know, we're very familiar with regional cooperation, and there's things that cities, you know, are, you know, really like to do regionally cooperated in a cooperative way, but there's other things like snow removal or or other things that we believe, very importantly, the city needs to control. And so to me, I just think that's very important, and I want to make that clear and hope that that's kind of consistent with how everybody else views it.
So how it's currently outlined, besides the sort of run of the river of the whitewater experience, which is just within the city of limits of Des Moines, so that would be Birdland to Harriet Street, and then the floor site to Harriet Street. Those are within the individual pro forma, and that vendor relationship will be with the Central Iowa Water Trails, and that's important because that's what makes it a self-sustaining organization. However, outside of those downtown projects, each jurisdiction retains control of their own vendors for kayak rentals and things like that.
Perfect, yeah, as as long as I think that's clearly conveyed, I think that's helpful.
Any other questions or comments, counsel? If not, there will be additional opportunity to provide input either directly to to the governing committee or to to me, and I can carry that message. I want to thank you, Hannah and Nikki, for making the presentation tonight. You had to cover a lot of territory in a fairly short period of time, so you did a great job, and and as always, you're doing a great job pulling all of these pieces together for us. This is not easy work, so, good job.
Well, thank you, and thanks for your leadership on this.
You bet, thank you. Okay, we are still under public communications. Cindy, do we have anyone who would like to make comments under public communication?
Yes, we do. Jim, were you going to speak first?
Yes, so I wanted to let the council know that we did receive a petition today to call for a special election. And I talked with Tim, or I left a message with Tim Pearson sort of at the end of the day, and and just to talk about, just be prepared to talk about what the next steps are. But I believe that we may have somebody on the agenda or on the call this evening that that may want to address the council on the the special election, so I'll go ahead and defer to that individual if they want to mention or discuss something with the council.
Cindy, do we, do we have that individual?
Yes, he's unmuted.
Good evening, my name is Adam Har, my address, six, seven, two, four, Northwest Forty-Eighth Court. Three hundred and eighty-four signatures to petition for that early special election were delivered this morning. Roughly twenty percent more than the three hundred and thirty, three hundred and twenty-two required. Anecdotally, in the course of canvassing for those signatures, we found roughly three to one support for an early special election in the, in our neighborhood canvassing. And given that, that level of support and the the large number of signatures above the requirement that were received, I would like to request the the council make immediate consideration of setting a date for that special election, and would propose a May fourth date, given the sixty-day minimum notice to the county that is required. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy, do we have?
Cindy and I, Cindy and I, Cindy and I talked this afternoon. I believe that, and Cindy, and correct me, but because I just talked to you a little bit right before the meeting, but there may be another petition out there that you may be aware of, but we have until March fourth to, for the petition to be submitted. Is that accurate?
Yes, March fourth is the last date to submit. I I don't know that there's another one, I've just heard rumor that there is, so.
Okay, so March, we have the March fourth date, so with our next council meeting, we would have the we'd certainly have a resolution to 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 submit, to set the date for the special election at at that point in time. Cindy, is anything else, I know you've talked with the county a little bit on this, is there anything else you want to add?
No, I I guess the only other, the only other thing that ever comes up is now what? As far as candidates go, there will still be affidavits and candidacy that have to be filed. When I look at check two seventy-two, it looks like, because we're a primary city, those have to be submitted fifty-three days prior to the election, which basically leaves one week. If we only give a sixty, if we give a straight sixty days, and they have to turn it in fifty-three days before that, then they're only getting a week to get their candidacy papers together.
I I'm I'm concerned that we're kind of, this is Councilman Coke, I I I'm kind of concerned we're having this conversation without really thinking through.
Right, I agree.
This is kind of dangerous. I think what we should do before we have a kind of a conversation like this is to think through, you know, making sure that, you know, now that, I mean, we, one petition, we, there's no need for multiple petitions. We, it appears, as long as we have a viable petition that's been submitted, then we need to 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 think through all the ramifications, make sure anybody who wants to be able to to put nomination papers has has adequate time to do that, and I think sort of spitballing it here in this council meeting is kind of not a very good idea.
Right, right. What I would suggest is, Kim, you you and you and Cindy have done some preliminary research on it, but we need some some full research done on it, just in terms of what are the, you know, what are the legal requirements, what is the timeline? You know, I think that all of us would agree that we want to make sure that, given the fact that we do have a petition now for a special election, we need to make sure it's, you know, that that it's, that it's valid, and and I'm, you know, confident it probably is, but we need to make sure that it is that we give all of the residents in Johnston who have an interest in running for this seat, seat, you know, opportunity to do that, as if we're an election that we're being held in November. So I don't want, I, you know, I want to make sure that we're giving sufficient time and and sufficient notice so that we have, in fact, a a, an election that every, everyone can fully participate in.
That's not a problem, we certainly can do that. I think this, Cindy and I had about a half hour to go through this.
Yeah, yeah, and that's.
Prior to tonight, so we're just trying to give you a general idea, but that's not a problem, we can certainly do that.
No, we've got, we've got time, we want to do it right, so.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can I, can I, I'd like to ask a question of Cindy. How many signatures are needed to get on, get your name on the ballot?
I knew you were going to ask me that, and I don't know the number off the top of my head, I have to pull the abstract from the last election to figure that out, so I will get to that just as soon as I pull that abstract and look at.
That's some of the, yeah, that's some of the detail that we'll have to figure out.
Right, I appreciate that, thank you. And I, and I do agree that we need to fully notify people that there is going to be in a special election and that there should be time, you know, for people to consider and to get get on the, you know, think about whether or not they want to run and get on the ballot. But I would imagine, as I recall, it's probably going to be, well, I I guess we'll wait until we find out how many signatures we'll need. Thank you.
I will have that for you tomorrow.
And so this special election would fill the remainder of Councilman Siroka's term. So there would not be another election this fall for that seat.
For that seat.
Correct, thank, thank you.
Okay. More work on that to do. Do we have any, Cindy, do we have anyone else that wants to speak under public communications?
No one else is indicated.
Okay. Soon as I pull my agenda up here. Next item on the agenda is public hearings, and we have three public hearings this evening. The first is to conduct a public hearing on the proposition on the issuance of not to exceed twelve million, five hundred thousand dollar general obligation bonds of the city of Johnston, state of Iowa, and consider resolution number twenty-one dash forty-six instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of not to exceed twelve million, five hundred thousand dollar general obligation bonds. And we will open this public hearing at seven fifty-two, and I'm guessing it's probably Teresa.
It is, and I better unmute myself. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I don't believe we have had any written comments or objections, right, Cindy?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, thank you. This, this first public hearing is part of our two thousand twenty-one A issuance, which is going to occur right after the fiscal year begins in July, and it's going to contain projects that are in our two thousand twenty-one CIP. And actually, a few projects that were in our two thousand twenty CIP that were delayed until a later start for two thousand twenty-one. Specifically, like our Northwest Eighty-Sixth Street side path or trail, if you'd like to call it that, the finishing phase on Northwest Eighty-Sixth Street, or excuse me, finishing phase on Northwest Beaver Drive Trail and Overlay, and then our sidewalks, and then the Lou Clarkson Master Plan and Additions, which I believe he's had some engineering things come to you on that. Anyway, these are the essential corporate purpose projects, portion of that two thousand twenty-one A issuance. And we're also going to be doing current refundings of our two thousand eleven C and our two thousand thirteen A, and hoping for great interest savings on those refundings as well. So on the staff report, I just kind of laid out a timeline of what has to occur as we move through some of these so the issuances on this, and then later on in consent, under consent, you are also passing a pre-levy resolution, which means that we're already levying the tax for this two thousand twenty-one A. In two thousand twenty-one B, you'll be levying that tax in the budget that starts July first as well. Are there any questions?
Also, any questions for Teresa?
So Teresa, when you you say the twelve point five million dollar figure, and there's the two refundings, which are roughly, if you add them up, are about six point five million. So is that six point five million included in the twelve point five million? Okay, so it's, so the four projects there, the not to exceed, the roughly, the cost of those is roughly six million combined, and then the other six and a half million is the refundings.
That's correct.
And when you say refunding, is that like a refinance?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We won't be extending the terms, however, it's just strictly interest savings. We never make a term longer or any of that type of thing.
But it's our anticipation that we'll be able to refinance those at a lower interest rate type. Thank you.
Other questions for Teresa? This is a public hearing on this item. Cindy, do we have anyone that has indicated that they would like to address the council?
No, we do not.
Okay, we will close the public hearing. Okay, we will close the public hearing then at seven fifty-six. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty-one dash forty-six?
Second cope.
We have a motion and second, Cindy vote please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to item five B, conduct a public hearing on the proposition on the issuance of not to exceed nine million three hundred thousand dollar general obligation. Urban renewal bonds of the city of Johnston, state of Iowa, and consider resolution number twenty-one dash forty-seven. Instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of not to exceed nine million three hundred thousand general obligation urban renewal bonds. And we will open this public hearing at seven fifty-seven.
Yeah, uh, good evening again, and I, I should have said a portion of those refunding bonds that I mentioned in that last email. Or that last staff report are also in this staff report, so when you total the two together, this is all part of twenty-one A, two thousand twenty-one A. But this hearing is on the three projects that will be um, paid for from urban renewal funds. So um, Northwest Fifty-Fourth Avenue reconstruction will be finishing that um, in two thousand twenty-one. Unless Matt says something different here while we're talking, and then um, we'll begin the engineering and design work for Northwest. One Hundredth Street reconstruction from fifty-fourth to sixty-second, that's just the very first portion of that project. And then um, we have the big reconstruction of the intersection at Merle Hay Road and Johnston Drive. Along with the road into the Ignite Development, and all three of those projects are funded through tax increment financing funds. So that, those projects require a different type of hearing, and I believe um, I should have said that. Uh, I think it's the two thousand eleven C, uh, I shouldn't say this without double checking, but one of those refundings is, is also paid from tip. So together, the two of these hearings added together um, come up to that twenty-one million. Twenty million, twenty-one million dollar figure that we talked about when we talked about our um. Projected CIP, as this gets closer to July, those numbers are going to be refined, so that's why both numbers are not to exceed numbers. I'm hoping they'll be a little lower.
Council, any questions for Teresa? This is a public hearing on this item. Do we have uh, anyone that is with us this evening that would like to make a comment?
No indication.
Okay, we will close the public hearing then at seven fifty-nine. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty-one dash forty-seven? So, Martin, second Martin. We have a motion and second, Cindy vote please.
Councilmember ready?
Yes.
Temple?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes. Motion passed.
Um. Item C, I'd like to discuss, mayor, if you'd like to.
Okay, I, it, but is this a public hearing on this item? Okay, that's what I was confused about. I'm going, I'm not sure what to do with this.
Don't open, please read what the item is.
So, yes, uh, so item five C is not a public hearing, it's a discussion item. Uh, moving the public hearing for the two thousand twenty-one dash two thousand twenty-two proposed property tax levy to March fourth, twenty twenty-one. At four o'clock PM. Teresa?
Yes, I just wanted um, at the advice, uh, some advice that I received is that we should leave this on the agenda for tonight. Because originally, the first hearing was to be held on March first, so if there was someone in the audience. Who wanted to address the council on any issue related to that property tax hearing. To make sure they knew that we had moved it to March fourth at four PM, they're welcome to either submit. Uh, their comments in writing to the mayor, council, city administrator, myself, prior to four o'clock on March fourth. Or attend the hearing on March fourth, but we just wanted to make sure, in case someone was here tonight. That they knew they had an opportunity to um, make their statements on Thursday at four o'clock.
Very good. Council have any comments on that? More of an informational item than anything. Okay, we'll move on to uh, the consent agenda. We have several items under the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move approval, Temple.
Second cope.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? If not, Cindy vote please.
Councilmember Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to item eight A, the non-consent agenda. Consider first reading of ordinance number ten forty-eight. An ordinance amending the Johnson revised ordinances of two thousand seven, chapter sixty-five, to modify the locations of stop intersections. And yield intersections. This is probably Matt?
This is Clayton.
Clayton? Take it away.
So this, this is our annual stop sign ordinance update, um, just capturing new streets that were developed. Uh, in this instance, it's uh, streets within the Rigsdale Heights development, and then one stop sign that was annexed. Seventy-eighth and a hundred and seventh. All signs would be existing or on new, newly constructed streets. Be happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions for Clayton?
Could you put the map back up again real quick, Clayton?
I think we're getting some background noise.
Okay, I get, okay, now I figured out where it is. Okay, thanks, sorry.
Other council questions for Clayton? If not, do we have anyone with us this evening that would like to make a comment on this?
Seeing none.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve first reading of ordinance number ten forty-eight?
I move race.
Second cope.
We have a motion and a second, Cindy vote please.
Councilmember Temple?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item eight B, consider first reading of ordinance number ten forty-nine. Amending chapter sixty-nine to modify parking prohibited for, parking prohibited for hazardous locations.
Good evening, mayor and council, this is uh, Matt. Um, Cindy, if you could open the parking memo, please. And slide to attachment A. Um, tonight, I'd like to discuss uh, amending the ordinance um, at the, in chapter sixty, sixty-nine. Um, Public Safety was contacted about a parking issue on a hundred and third and a hundred and sixth street. That which created a hazardous condition. Um, here is the map to those areas that the hazardous conditions were created at. I'm pretty much at the ingress and egress to these structures. Um, if you want to slide over to attachment B, um, Public Safety took some photos of. The cars that blocked the line of sight, so that the cars that are on a hundred and third are not able to be seen easily. Due to, for the cars that are pulling out. Um, so upon review of chapter sixty-nine. Um, section sixty-nine oh six, number thirteen hazardous condition. Um, it, it allows us to, to place no parking from here to corner signs to address issues like this. Um, in the memo, there was recommendation to, to start with, um, placing these signs. However, upon further review of that. Section in the code, that signs that are placed from here to curb also are, from here, no parking from here to curb. Also must have the curb painted in a yellow color. Um, historically, the city has not painted curbs when signs are placed. Um, the proposed amendment will allow for an option of these signs to be placed without painting the curb. But it will also keep the option to paint the curb if um, the council so desires. Um, this has been reviewed by legal, it was also discussed at the Public Works ad hoc committee. And uh, was in favor, they were in favor of amending the ordinance to allow for this um, option. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Matt?
Yes, this is Sarah. Uh, Matt, tell me about the yellow painting that you need to do on the curb. Is that a standard thing, or is that something that we done away, like you say?
Currently, we've uh, not painted the curbs. Typically, it'll fade over time, also the snowplows. Um, will rub it off, so it just becomes a perpetual maintenance issue um, due to the, the snowplows using the curb to guide themselves. It's, it's just like any other street painting, um, over time, it does fade or wear off.
Right, right, I understand that. What I was trying to get was that, what is that need to put a yellow paint up there? Other than is it a reflective painting, or is that something else?
No, I think it just draws attention to the curb where, where vehicles aren't supposed to park. I think it just draws attention to the driver's eye, and they, you know, they start to look around and try and figure out what the yellow paint is for.
Okay. Yeah, well, I have no opinion on that, but I, I, I don't know. I'm not a traffic control guy, so I don't know much about it.
Matt, yes, go ahead.
Uh, historically, we haven't done it. I think the last place we painted, no parking from here, or we placed no parking from here to corner. Was when we had an issue when the new high school went in. Think out on Galleria, uh, or Ninety-Ninth, um, and we haven't, we haven't had any issues with, with the curb not being painted.
So Matt, just so I understand, so the streets that, that, well, you'll have the no parking here to corner will be the. The streets with the red arrows on them?
Yes, right at the ingress egress. Um, Cindy, if you scroll down into tat, into the attachment B, you can see. Keep scrolling. It's on the next page, right there where you can see that a sign's attached to a light pole, we would essentially amend the ordinance. This will be another council action that'll have to come back, and we would place no parking from here to corner so many feet. We would amend the ordinance, um, it does take council action to, to place those signs.
Yeah, I was, it wasn't clear to me if we were placing them on the streets with the, where the yellow was or the red, so that was what my question was about, so.
It would be on a hundred and third and a hundred and six on the streets with the red, um, the yellow arrows indicate private ingress egress.
Perfect, thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions for Matt? Do we have anyone attending this evening that would like to address the council on this item?
Seeing none.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number ten forty-nine?
Move approval cope.
Second Evans.
Martin. We have a motion and a second, Cindy vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Temple?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item eight C, consider first reading of ordinance number ten fifty, amending chapter sixty-two to add engine brake section.
Yes, this is uh, mine again. Um, Public Works was contacted by residents that live in the Northwood Development. About tractor trailer trucks using their engine brake in the early morning or late evening hours. Um, we reviewed code section uh, sixty-two traffic regulations, checked with Public Safety. Um, they would need, in order to enforce, they would, they don't have an ordinance, so we would need to adopt an ordinance. Um, sometimes the reasons for, for these loud noises of the engine brake. Um, are due to either a modified engine brake or an older truck, which did not meet the current emission controls. Um, with that, I've attached in there a email from the resident requesting an engine brake ordinance. Um, upon view of chapter sixty-two, the regulations, like I said, there was no present ordinance addressing this. Um, the amendment would add section sixty-two ten, um, engine and compression brake section. Uh, the ordinance was also reviewed by legal and supported by the Public Works ad hoc committee. Um, one point to note in the um, new section or the proposed ordinance is that it does allow for the use. Of an engine brake to avoid a traffic accident or in a case of emergency.
Questions for Matt?
So Matt, this prohibition would be citywide, correct?
Correct.
Other questions for Matt? Do we have anyone with us this evening that would like to address the council on this item?
Seeing none.
Do we have a motion to approve first reading of ordinance number ten fifty? Don't move, Martin. We have a motion and a second, Cindy vote please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Temple?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item eight D, consider approval of the resolution number twenty-one dash forty-four. Authorizing police chief and fire chief to sign update MOU with Camp Dodge.
Mayor and council, this is Chief Clark, and I guess I was a little too efficient in getting it on the agenda a month ago. Right after uh, it was approved, the sheriff's department came back and had just a couple minor language changes. Uh, to the MOU, and so uh, at council advice, it's coming back before you. Because the agreement has changed, even though it's minor, um, for reapproval of the agreement.
Chief, can you just summarize real briefly what those changes are? I mean, are they just basically technical changes, or?
Yes, uh, there was just some minor language changes as to um, basically changing. Uh, the order of the sheriff's department and the Johnston Police Department uh, in a sentence. And removing the word uh, fully uh, from another sentence to change that to primarily.
Yeah.
A very, very minor.
Council, have any questions for the chief? Anyone with us this evening that would like to address the council on this item? If not, do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty, twenty-one dash forty-four?
Move approval cope.
Second Evans.
We have a motion and a second, Cindy vote please.
Councilmember Temple?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item eight E, consider approval of resolution number twenty-one dash fifty-two. A resolution approving the preliminary plat for life estates plat one. Subject property is located at seventy-three fifty-one Northwest One Hundredth Street, PZK's twenty dash sixteen.
Good evening, this is Clayton Ender. Uh, Steve and Karen Alencheck have uh, submitted this minor subdivision. Preliminary plat uh, for the subdivision of their property into two lots for single-family homes. Uh, one lot would contain the existing home, and then a new lot on the south side of their property uh, for future home construction. Uh, typically, we would see a plat like this accompanied with a final plat, however, it, they have explained to staff that they are. Uh, wanting to proceed with just the preliminary at this time, and then uh, wait on the final plat until they have a pending sale. On either the lot or the house, um, before they uh, proceed with the final plating. A little background on the property, it is zoned rural estate residential. Um, and both lots would be in compliance with the zoning for the property. It is on our comprehensive plan as rural residential as well, so also in compliance with our comprehensive plan. Access to both lots would be restricted to the existing driveway access, there'd be a shared private drive there. The applicant is requesting deferral of sidewalk along Northwest One Hundredth Street at this time, due to there being no other sidewalk in the, in the vicinity. Uh, staff and planning and zoning commission have supported that and are recommending deferral until other. Staff and planning and zoning commission have supported that and are recommending deferral until otherwise directed. Property would be serviced by public water. Sanitary sewer is currently not available, so any new structure would be serviced by onsite septic system. And due to the limited amount of homes being developed, it would be recommended to do an equal value alternative for Parkland dedication, which would typically be cash in lieu of land dedication. I would be happy to answer any questions or go into further detail. I'm not sure if the applicant is with us tonight. I'm not seeing their name on the list, but it does seem to be a pretty straightforward plat in staff's opinion.
Council have any questions for Clayton? Saying none, do we have anybody with us this evening that would like to address council on this item? If not, do we have a motion to approve resolution number 21-52?
Move approval cope.
Second, Evans.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy vote please.
Councilmember Co?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Temple?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 8F, consider approval of resolution number 21-53, a resolution approving the preliminary plat for wooded acres. The subject property is located at 11087 Northwest Towner Drive, PZK's 20-24.
Good evening, Clayton Ender again. This subject property, it was annexed into the city in 2019. It was shortly after purchased by Bab Management LLC, who is the applicant this evening. They have recently rezoned the southern approximate 8.9 acres. If you recall, that was recently on your agenda to R1100, single family residential. The northern portion of the property remains ag reserve zoning district. On our updated comprehensive plan, we do identify the property as a mixture of medium density residential and parks and open space. The medium density residential is generally six to 10 units an acre. What they're proposing certainly is a little, is less than that, but it does not exceed that. And there is opportunity for future redevelopment, which could be, bring that density a little closer to what the comprehensive plan is. And as for the parks and open space, there's no proposal to have public acquisition of land here. But there is preservation of floodplain and wooded areas on the property, which is in line with the comprehensive plan. Access to the property would be off of Northwest Towner Drive. There would be private shared driveways. Lots four and five would share a private driveway. Lots one and two would share a private driveway. Lots three and six would share a private driveway. Each would be constructed at the time of home construction. As with the previous item that I just talked about, sidewalk is not currently present along Northwest Towner Drive and is likely not to be present for, in the near future, so the applicant has requested deferral of sidewalk until otherwise directed by council. That would be supported by staff and planning commission. As for utilities to the site, this is, property is currently within the boundaries of current litigation between the city and Xena Rural Water District. The applicant is proposing to utilize Xena Rural Water as their water service provider. Xena does have a four inch main along Northwest Towner Drive. They would extend a three inch water main into this subject property to serve the homes. This would require a variation of our subdivision regulations. Our standard is, new subdivisions must have a six inch minimum water main size, and they are proposing a three inch main. The main size has been reviewed by staff and would be able to provide domestic water service to the homes and would be able to provide fire service to the homes, subject to an alternative fire arrangement. Typically, we require fire hydrants in residential development. But at a three inch main, they wouldn't be able to support a fire hydrant, but they can support individual residential sprinkler systems in the homes. So they have requested council variation of the subdivision regulations to allow for sprinkler systems of the homes in lieu of fire hydrants, subject to review and approval by the fire marshal with the building permit. And the fire marshal has reviewed that and is comfortable with, with that request. As for sanitary sewer, the properties are currently not within range of sanitary sewer. They would provide easement for future trunk main to service the growth area. But in the meantime, individual homes would be serviced by onsite septic systems. There is one buffer required on the site for, against zoning districts along Towner Drive adjoining the golf course, there's a 10 foot buffer requirement. The applicant has requested that buffer be deferred until either home construction on lot one or redevelopment of lot one in lieu of installing it at this time. Drainage for the site generally is from south to north into Beaver Creek. Individual homes would construct many detention basins to accommodate stormwater runoff from any new impervious surfaces generated from the site, and that would be in compliance with our city's stormwater standards. Parkland dedication for this site would be pretty minimal, so the applicant has requested an equal value alternative of cash in lieu of land dedication. And that would be supported by the Parks Department and Planning and Zoning Commission. There is areas of floodway and floodplain on the property. Those areas are subject to our overlay zoning districts for each, for floodway and floodway fringe. There's no proposed development within those areas at this time. Furthermore, there is a stream buffer requirement along Beaver Creek, which they have indicated on the preliminary plat to preserve that, that corridor through there. The last item I want to touch on is their comprehensive plan does show a future north-south roadway between Northwest Towner Drive and Northwest Road Drive on the north side of Beaver Creek. This was identified during our comprehensive plan process as a potential corridor for a, an alternative route for north-south traffic into our growth area on the northwest side of town. At this point in time, the roadway is not needed. So they are not proposing to dedicate right of way at this time or, nor would they construct the roadway at this time. But they have identified a potential corridor through their property so that we can make sure we're preserving that. With a final plat for the property, we would do a development agreement stipulating conditions for the ability for the city to construct that roadway and receive right of way. So those details would be flushed out with the final plat. But they have indicated where that potential corridor could be. Actual alignment may vary, but it's generally thought that it would follow this alignment, which generally goes down the center of the property and then tries to cross the creek at its narrowest point. I know I just did a lot of information there. I'd be happy to go into questions. I do believe you have the applicant and their representative on the line if you have questions of them as well. That'd be Ben Bungie and Eric Cannon's the representative. And that wraps me up.
Does the council have any questions for Clayton or for the developer?
I'm not sure if this is a question for Clayton or the developer, but I, I have, I have spent about 15 minutes staring at this chart that we have, or not chart, but this map, and trying to figure out the lot lines. And it, so it's, it's, well, don't even try to zoom it in because it's, I don't think it makes it worse. But I, I just, I would encourage staff, as we request materials that are included in the council packet, that, that we need to have a better breakdown of, because this is a, we're approving, approving a plat here, so we, you know, need to have an idea of where the, where one, one plotted lot starts and the other one stops. And I, I mean, you know, I'll support this, but I have, it's very difficult for me to figure out where, you know, plot six starts and where plot five is and where plot four is, and so it's, it's, it's just kind of frustrating to not have a better piece of information in front of us at this time. And so just would encourage staff to encourage the, the folks that we work with to get us a, a document that's a little easier to follow, because, I mean, if you look at the page before, it has, it shows the entire, the entire break, breakdown of the area. And then the next page turns it all on its side and it has all this topographical information. It's just very difficult to follow, so. You know, not going to impose the item here tonight, but it's just, the, the, the information we have in front of us is, is kind of confusing, I think.
Comment received. We'll, in the future, we'll work to make sure that those are more clearly delineated.
Thank you.
And you will, you will see this again with the final plat, which will have lot lines only, so this is not the final approval of this. So, but, but I did hear your comment. We will work to improve that in the future.
Other comments or questions? Cindy, is there anyone from the audience that has indicated an interest in speaking to us?
No, there's not.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number 21-53?
Still moved, Evans.
Second, Martin.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy vote please.
Councilmember Co?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Temple?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 8G, consider change orders number 29, 34, 35, 36, 39, and 40 with Hanson JTC LLC for the Johnston Town Center project.
Thanks, Mayor. This is Dave Warding. We're continuing to work through a number of different change orders for the Johnston Town Center project. I'll go through them somewhat quickly and feel free to stop me as I'm, as I'm going. As the council recall, we do have a owner contingency that is used for sort of any items that come up during the, the course of construction that require changes that are sort of at the direction or at the request of the, of the owner of the city. The first one, we, it was sort of an oversight when we sort of reconfigured the ice rink and splash pad from a chilled ice to a synthetic ice and then redid the splash pad. The original ice rink had a center sort of island in the middle of the, of the rink that had a pole with a light on it. Oversight, as that got redesigned, that island went away, but the lighting plan did not get reconfigured, and so design team realized we had sort of a dark spot in the middle of the ice rink that wouldn't be conducive to ice skating, and so this change should have been included with the original change from the, from the chilled ice to the synthetic ice. But we have got it now and would account for additional lighting that would be added to the shade sale poles, and that required some additional work on those poles to accommodate that lighting. So that's got a change order of about $18,200, and that has been reviewed by our design team, and they were comfortable. That's right in line with sort of the expectation of what that work would cost. Change orders 34, 35, and 36, one of the first things that we asked VenueWorks, who's been brought on board as the sort of manager of the yard and the site support building. One of the first things we asked them to do was take a look at the electrical connections around the yard and around the city hall that make, to make sure that they were comfortable with what they had available for any events. Their recommendation based on their experiences adding, and this is sorry, very technical, but L21-30R outlets, and essentially what those are outlets that they're able to plug in a junction box or a temporary breaker box to those outlets at 50 amps, and so that allows them flexibility for events and special programming to plug in that temporary box, plug different things that need power into that temporary box and have control of the breakers and such right there on site rather than having to go into the site support building or to the city hall to the, to the panels to do that. One of those would be installed right at the, sort of the front side of city hall on the stage area, and then two of them would be installed, sort of one on either end of the, of the ice rink that will allow flexibility for different events and activities. The ones, in particular, the ones along the ice rink, we were concerned about the cost of those. And reviewing those with the electrician and with the design team, those are really being driven by the the length of conduit from the site support building and the size of, of wire necessary to, to power those boxes, so we're comfortable in those amounts that are, have been quoted there totaling of the three of 17,200. Really, the impetus of these is, particularly the two at the ice rink. Once concrete is down, the cost to install those later would be astronomically higher, as we'd have to, to bore those, and so before the concrete goes down, we're able to do those at a somewhat more efficient cost. Change order 39, we've talked about the technology in the council chambers as we're trying to get ready to resume in-person meetings, knowing that we will need the ability to have sort of a hybrid meeting where folks can participate either virtually or in person. The room is, as you know, was set up to livestream the event. We also have the ability for folks to conference call in, but we don't have the ability to tie the in-room technology, the cameras in particular, to a platform such as Zoom. And so we have been working with SKC, the technology vendor, and they've proposed a solution that would adjust the equipment and settings. We'd be adding some equipment that would take care of that sort of problem that would allow us to do more of a hybrid meeting. And that cost has a, as a cost of about $13,070. Certainly, when we started the design of city hall, we weren't thinking about Zoom meetings and hybrids, so that's definitely not something we anticipated early on. Final change order, change order 40. We've talked about this a number of times, but we did have an allowance for monument signs within the original budget of $45,000 and as well as $25,000 for wayfinding signage. We've talked a couple of times at the council, the amenities committee has talked a couple of different times. And I don't know, Cindy, if you could open the monument sign rendering PDF. But this change order would would, would cover the installation of three signs, the primary monument sign that would be located in the island off the Bane entrance from Merle Hay Road. This is the design the council's previously seen. The very bottom base would be integral colored concrete with a limestone. The Johnston Town Center would be backlit letters at night. The top part of the sign would be a cabinet where it says movie in the yard. That would be an electronic message center larger than the electronic message center that was on the original or the old city hall sign. And then the Johnston Town Center logo there would be backlit. In addition to this sign, we would have the wayfinding sign, the low sign that would be located right along the ice rink splash pad that would direct people either north or south as they come in from the main entrance. And we would have an unlit sign off of Northwest 62nd at the east entrance that would denote city hall entrance as well. You know, if you recall the original discussions, there were some astronomical costs being thrown around. We've refined the design, we've refined the estimates and what these three signs total before you come to a cost of just over, or just under $123,000. It's actually less than the last conversation we had as Hanson worked through the design and estimating and bidding those projects out. They did come in a little bit under what we talked about. Since we did have $70,000 included in the original allowance, this change orders for the balance are just under $53,000, $53,000. Our, our total owner contingency balance at this time is just under $1.4 million, and as a reminder, any balance left in that owner contingency at the completion of the project will come off the total cost of the project, so we're continuing to, despite these change orders, continuing to maintain the project significantly under budget. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Council have any questions for David?
So David, is the 1.388 million balance after all of these change owners or before that?
After.
Okay.
Yes, after. And we have a couple, do you have a couple more pending? We've just been working through, there's, some of these are pretty detailed, so I've been working through two or three more that we've had some questions on, so. I know the last couple of meetings, I've had a few of these for you. We'll have a, probably one more meeting with two or three more coming, but.
Other questions for David? Cindy, has anybody? Cindy, has anybody indicated that they would like to, uh, speak with the council about this?
No ma'am.
Okay. With that, do we have a motion to approve the chain, uh, change orders with Hanson JTC?
Move approval.
Second Martin.
You have a motion and a second Cindy vote please.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Temple?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 8H, consider amendment two to Johnston Public Art Agreement, Ripples.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Adam. Uh, you have in front of you today, uh, the second amendment for the Ripples art contract. Um, it is in the amount of six thousand seven hundred dollars. There would be a future change order for this, uh, if the contract approved this evening. Uh, we just worked through the final details of it late last week. So the change order wasn't ready. Although the artist is in the process of fabrication and we were anxious to give him, uh, some direction on this. Uh, so as I mentioned, he's working on fabricating the custom piece Ripples. Uh, he's done a number of models, uh, both 3D printed, uh, and some other mockups, uh, of what this piece will look like as he's gone through that process. He's gone through a couple of refinements. The first is one that has no expense to the city. Um, that would be the former wire of which the 2,000 scales would be hanging on. Um, he has switched that wire to a metal rod, uh, that'll avoid the need to be able to tighten that, uh, wiring over time as it was loosened up, uh, for the weather. Uh, so that will be coming out of the artist's contingency budget. The second change is one that we had some discussion on at the committee level, uh, and that would be, uh, a couple of options that he presented for upgrades for fixing those kinetic scales, uh, to that, um, wire, now metal rod. Uh, after some discussion on this, it was the recommendation of our art consultant, Liz Legit, we worked with on the art RFP, uh, that we upgrade, uh, to a, uh, a device that, uh, would not be easily manipulated by the public that might come in there with like a bike key, uh, and be able to detach those scales or loosen them, uh, which would result in it kind of falling down and, and kind of taking away from the scenery, uh, of the, the piece. We also explored potentially welding, uh, those scales to that metal wire. Uh, that would have come with a significantly higher cost. Uh, there was some concern that, uh, over time, uh, the way that these are attached, they might loosen from that wire, uh, and require some tightening, obviously, since there's 2,000 of them. Now that presented a little bit of concern that that might, uh, be a burdensome task for the city, uh, whatever staff would take that on. Uh, but conversations with Liz, uh, and some other artists who have done kinetic pieces here in Iowa and use some similar devices. Uh, they haven't really seen that loosening occur. Uh, so there's, uh, from her perspective, no real reason to make that, uh, more expensive upgrade. Uh, and instead just go with an anti-tamper clamp device, um, which would be the, the bulk of this, uh, change order price increase, just to ensure that people aren't loosening those up. Uh, and then as part of that as well, we're also recommending that we order, uh, several additional, uh, scales and the clamps, uh, just so that there are some extras there that, uh, we can replace any ones that might get broken or, or go missing over time and not have to go through that refabrication process, which since they're custom, since they're plus custom clamp devices, uh, that would probably be fairly expensive. Uh, so those together would include, uh, the change order of sixty-seven hundred dollars that would come in front of you in the future. Uh, this is just the amendments, uh, for the time being. There is attached and I believe Cindy is going through, uh, some additional detail and background as well as some graphic images of the, uh, the piece. Uh, as proposed, happy to answer any questions on those, uh, as they might arise.
So council, have any questions for Adam? Adam, I like the, um, the artist rendition in the snow. I hadn't thought about how Ripples would look with snow falling on him, but very nice.
It is, looks really cool. I'm excited as to when it gets, gets put up.
Uh huh.
Just a, a couple of other quick notes, uh, as you're kind of scaling through this, um, one additional potential change order we're working through is the concrete below Ripples. Uh, as this has become a piece that you can walk underneath, uh, there's some ADA concerns that we need to work through. And we've gone through a couple of different options, uh, of what might be placed underneath the sculpture so that folks, uh, that might be sight impaired, uh, wouldn't run into it. Uh, the initial bids on those did come back fairly high, uh, so we're still working through some alternatives. Uh, but we hope to be able to present, uh, that change order, um, with some additional detail in the future. And then we're also working with venue works right now, uh, to get the equipment list for, uh, any games and other activities that would occur in the yard as well as the interior build out of the concessions building, uh, that would be handled through, uh, an existing line item allowance, um, that we've got out there, which we're hoping will come in under budget on that one. Uh, so that won't occur in the form of a change order, uh, but, uh, as a use of that allowance in the future.
Any other questions or comments for Adam? Is there anyone in the audience that has indicated an interest in speaking Cindy?
No.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve amendment two to the Johnston Public Art Agreement?
I'm most age.
Second Temple.
We have a motion and a second Cindy vote please.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Temple?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 8I, consider approval of purchase order number 20-071 to MTI Distributing Inc. For thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty cents for a new tractor mower for the public art, uh, public, uh, for the Parks Department. I've got public art on my mind.
That's easy for you to say. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. This is, uh, John. Um, normally I don't bring purchase orders to, uh, non-consent, but I felt like being that this is a CEP item, um, and a fairly significant change in what we originally had in the CEP, I wanted to make sure that it was clear what, uh, what the thought process was. Um, in the 2020, 2021 CEP, we had the replacement of a seventeen foot land pride, uh, mower deck as well as an overseeder. Um, we held on to those and didn't purchase them last year for a couple of reasons. First of all, with COVID and that, we wanted to make sure that, um, we had a little bit of financial freedom if other expenses came up. So we, we held off. But we also knew with, with the town center coming on board, um, and the fact that we were looking at the potential to put more native plantings in throughout the community, that the seventeen mower, uh, seventeen foot mower deck may become less of a need. Um, so as we looked at that this fall and into the winter, we did make the realization that we needed a little bit more specialized piece of equipment for the town center that would be able to handle the mowing a little bit better as well as some snow removal and, and tighter quarters. Um, so with that, we decided that the seventeen foot mower deck really wasn't a need anymore. So, um, that was twenty-one thousand within the CEP. Um, the overseeder, we still do use, uh, but we only use it a couple of times a year. And with talking with staff and other experts, we feel like that the overseeder that we do have can last probably another 10, 12 years. It, it's not one that really needs to be replaced. So between those two, they combined to be thirty-five thousand. Um, we also did some exploration of selling the current mower deck and, uh, the estimate that we're getting back is about six thousand dollars for that. So between all of those, between not replacing two of them and actually selling the, uh, the mower deck, it comes up above, uh, the, the, the amount needed for this mower slash, uh, tractor, um, slash, snow removal piece of equipment is actually less than the, the funds that we would have been spending, um, previously. So with that, we wanted to bring this forward. Um, I know council is always requesting for us to, on a yearly basis, look at the pieces of equipment that we have, um, and really examine whether that's the correct piece before trading it in. In this case, it was not the correct piece of equipment that we were going to trade in. So we opted for one that could be far more purposeful for some of the new facilities that we have coming on board. With that, any questions? I will be more willing to ask, answer.
Questions or comments from council?
Not really a question, but, and I may be speaking only for myself, but nobody should ever apologize for putting something on the non-consent agenda.
Cindy, is there anyone? Whoops, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I really appreciate you going through the detail.
No problem.
Cindy, is there anyone, uh, that is with us this evening that's indicated an interest in speaking?
No.
Any other comments or questions from the council? If not, do we have a motion to approve purchase order number 10-071?
So moved Evans.
I second.
We have a motion and a second Cindy vote please.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Temple?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
I think the mayor is frozen.
Did we lose her?
Well. She's a little stuck. There she is. Hope you're muted, Mayor.
Moving on to item 8J, consider resolution number 21-60, accepting the 28E agreement for trestle-to-trestle multi-use recreational trail, bridge construction, funding and maintenance between Polk County, the City of Des Moines, Polk County Conservation, and the City of Johnston.
I will take this one on as well. And, uh, I know Matt and Jim have had, uh, really a, a lot of work with this as well, probably more than myself. But, uh, so Jim or Matt, if you have anything to add, please feel free to, um, Cindy, if you could just open up the, uh, the concept, the bridge concept. I think for the most part, uh, we, the council has seen the, uh, the concept that is coming forward. And you can kind of scroll down. Uh, as you go down, I'll kind of explain some of it. Um, this is kind of the entry feature. These are some of the thing, items that the City of Johnston specifically was requesting as, as we looked at putting the new bridge in. Um, the column with accent lighting, um, the monument type section, uh, with limestone veneer, uh, with the engraved letters and, uh, the, the stainless steel archway. You can scroll down a little bit further. It's a little bit different. Look at that. It's kind of a side look at it. Once again, one of the key concepts with the, the new bridge is that we were trying to make sure the pillars leading down into the water, that was the foundation of the bridge, that we had minimal, uh, amount in the water to catch debris and ice. One of the other things that, uh, was viewed as a, as a positive is an area that you could kind of get off the, the trail itself and have a viewing point. And then of course, the, the customized aluminum railing and that. Just another look at that. That, that design is kind of imitating the, the original trestle. That's what that, the appearance of that is, is the original trestle that was there. Okay? Another viewpoint. Once again, this will be fully lit. Um, we'll have capabilities of changing the, the color scheme of the lighting on the bridge. Um, it can change based on holidays or, or whatever our whimsical wants are. Okay, that's the, the actual bridge. Um, the agreement itself, um, and you can go just directly to the 2080 agreement Cindy. And I'm not going to go, the other one, there you go. And I'm not going to go through this i- in detail. Um, basically in a nutshell, the overall bridge, oh, wrong one, I guess. The overall bridge, uh, cost was just over two million dollars. Um, they did receive a grant, a transportation grant that helped out. And, uh, they have FEMA funding right currently, right now of two hundred and forty-one thousand four hundred. Um, they are putting in, um, basically FEMA has decided they are replacing the existing bridge, not providing funding for an upgrade. And, uh, so, uh, they are looking at, uh, um, challenging that ruling from FEMA and seeing if they could potentially get some more. So, um, on the city side, um, our agreement was originally not to exceed three hundred and seventy-five thousand. Uh, with the fact that FEMA did not come through with as much as expected originally. Um, Polk County Conservation came back to the other entities and requested additional funds to try to cover that balance. Um, I don't remember exactly the timing, but I know, uh, we had the discussion that the council approved an additional two hundred thousand towards this project. Um, so the 2080 agreement, um, will, for the funding component, will, um, provide up to five hundred and seventy-five thousand from the City of Johnston. And, uh, that will move forward with, uh, hopefully the, uh, letting, which is a DOT letting, will occur in July. That's when it's scheduled for and construction would begin. Um, then once the contractor is set up, hopefully construction will begin this fall. With that, uh, Jim, Matt, if you have anything additional to add, um, feel free to do that. Uh, otherwise I'm more willing to answer any questions that you may have.
John, this is Jim and thank you for going through the, the, um, bridge plans. Um, you know, this has taken a long time to get here and, and really we've been waiting for, uh, communication from FEMA. And, uh, uh, so the group decided that let's just go with what we have. And if we can get the money raised from all the, the, uh, organizations to help support this, we'll go ahead and move forward. And so the idea is they are going to appeal the amount that FEMA is offering for this. And if they do get a, a positive, um, response from FEMA, then, uh, the communities and organizations that, that, uh, contributed to the replacement of the bridge will get a, will get part of their money back based on the percentage that they provided. So, so there's still a chance the numbers could come in a lot lower. I'm, I'm not, um, uh, you know, I'm not sure. The process takes a long time. So if we waited till we heard back from FEMA on the appeal, we probably wouldn't get started on this till next year. So, so I think it's a good move to go ahead and move forward and, and it's an important part of our trail system. And, uh, so I'm, I'm glad that they've been able to, to get everybody to come together. Everybody's looking at the 2080 agreement now and, uh, hopefully that'll get approved by all the, uh, organizations in the next few weeks. And they'll be able to move forward with the fabrication of the bridge.
Yeah, it sounds like everybody will have it on the agenda between now. We're the first ones to put it on the agenda for approval and, uh, everything will be approved, um, by the fifteenth of March.
Well, thank you Jim and John for all of your good work on this. It's been kind of a long haul. It's, uh, it's something that I hear from our residents about pretty regularly, even in the middle of the winter. They want to know when the bridge is going back up again. So, um, it's good to see that we actually have a date, a proposed completion date, uh, a year from, uh, this summer. So, you know, it's going to be a, a beautiful amenity leading into our community. So, um, even though it's taken a while and it's been a little bit of a challenge, I think that once it's done, um, everybody's going to be pleased with it. And, uh, and it'll be a proud entrance into our community. Other comments or questions?
So if, if our share is five hundred and seventy-five thousand, can we, what, what roughly are, who else is contributing and what else are there? What's their, what are their amounts or?
Can you scroll? Yeah. Could you scroll down? It's one. It's one of the, it is in the.
In there, yeah.
There, Tom, I'm not sure which, I think it's one of the attachments. But it does have a breakdown, right? Keep going, it's with all the attachments sort of a long. There you go. So here's the breakdown. The NPO is. Well, basically, we're providing for the aesthetics that everybody just wanted to replace the bridge at it, you know, at. Without a lot of amenities to it. And so the 375 is Johnston's responsibility because we wanted to make it a more impactful. When it came into the community, but you look at the all the organizations, the NPO is going to provide 20 or $400,000, which is about. 25% Polk County's 400,000 FEMA 241, and then Johnston and Des Moines are putting $200,000 each. For the. Construction of the bridge, so the construction, our share of the construction 200,000 or about 12%. And the aesthetics is is on top of that. And I do want to point out the aesthetics that we've talked about as the mayor mentioned and and John mentioned. I guess John mentioned it was the lighting and and the. The entry features to the bridge, that is a an estimated number. Our our guess is it's going to be less than 375, but this hasn't been bid yet. And so we'll still be able to do some. You know, value engineering and see if we can bring that number down. But we just wanted to make sure we had enough in there to pay for those aesthetic improvements. Does that answer your question, Tom?
Yes, thank you.
Other comments or questions? Cindy, do we have anybody from the. Public that wants to speak? Okay. Hearing none, we will take a motion on resolution number twenty one dash sixty.
Move approval code.
Do we have a second?
Second, Martin.
We have a motion and a second Cindy vote please.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Temple?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item eight K, consider approval of claims in the amount of 565,957.23. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'm most age.
Second Evans.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy vote please.
Councilmember ready?
Yes.
Temple?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to city administrator staff comments, Jim?
I have a few things I just want to mention this evening. First of all, we are working with the superintendent of the schools to try to get a joint meeting with the council in the school district. We we were going to try to set one up earlier this year, but that didn't quite happen. So I communicated with her late last week and and so we're going to do a doodle poll. We'll get that out to the council and the school board to try to figure out a date when we can get together for a joint meeting. I'm going to send you an email tomorrow to give me some parameters of what your schedule shows over the next probably three to four weeks. So that we can, and I realize there's spring breaks in there, so that that certainly will take that week out. But we'll we'll get a doodle poll out hopefully by, I'm hoping by the end of the week. Soon as I hear back from the superintendent and and see when we can get that meeting scheduled. So we'll do that. Also related to schools, as you are, I'm sure aware, the school does have an election tomorrow. Referendum, or I guess it's a it's consideration of the. Their PEPAL levy and there it's called the SAVE levy, which is. Part of the school's funding mechanism and they have to vote on that every every once in a while. So there is an election tomorrow, basically on the those two components of the school funding. So I just wanted to make sure that the council was aware of that. I'm sure you've probably seen some information out about that election tomorrow. Couple of items related to garbage collection. We found out today that the hauler for the composted program, which has been waste management. And as you're aware, we went from waste management to Ankeny sanitation last year as far as our garbage hauler. Well, Ankeny sanitation beginning this this year is going to be the new hauler for the composted program. So we'll have the garbage collection and the composted collection. By Ankeny sanitation and then the recycling will still be by waste management, but that'll be a slight change. Won't be any difference to our citizens besides the the truck that picks up their compost is the only thing they would notice. The 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 cost and and the the schedule and everything is going to remain the same. Also on the garbage front, I just wanted to let the council know, we did get our new rate for garbage collection that'll begin in. On July 1st and it's actually going to go down by a small amount. The the rate will decrease about 0.2%. So that's good news, we don't have often get to say that there's a cost that's going to go down to our residents. So on that, that will happen beginning with July 1. And then the other, the, oh, and just to let the council know, we did open city hall today to the public. And so we we were open for the first time in in several months. And for the public to come and do business in person at city hall. I did want to just let the council know, late last week, there was a. Email that went out to city managers in the metro area talking about when city halls are going to reopen. And we are one of the first ones, so that that's good news there. Who has or is open is Norwalk, Polk City. Grimes and Wa- 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 Key's open for utility payments. Polk City's open by appointment and then Norwalk and Grimes. And now Johnston are open as far as cities that are have their city hall open. The ones that aren't open, and most of them are going to wait probably till the latter part of March is Urbandale, Clive, Altoona, Ankeny and Pleasant Hills. So so they are still considering when they're going to reopen their city halls. Also within that, there was discussion as far as whether city council meetings are virtual or in person or a hybrid. And at this point in time, the hybrid councils that are meeting are Norwalk, Grimes and Ankeny. And then the virtual are obviously Johnston, which we're hoping to go live at our March 15th meeting. But Polk City, Urbandale, Clive, Altoona, Pleasant Hill and Wa- Key are still meeting virtually for their city councils. Some of them are. Planning to, they're they're all assessing that right now to determine when they'll be able to have live city council meetings again. So or in person council meetings, so just wanted to share that information. We're certainly on track with a lot of our metro communities to as far as what we're doing for city hall opening and and how we're handling our city council meetings. And that's all I had this evening.
Okay. Let's go around the council chambers, Councilman Coke?
Nothing to add, although supper was wonderful tonight, so.
I'm impressed, I I couldn't believe that you actually got it made and ate and did you change your clothes?
Yeah, yeah.
Changed your clothes?
Well, that wasn't that hard, I just.
Had a glass of wine? No, just.
I didn't do that, I didn't do that, no, no, no alcohol.
Well, I'm impressed, Councilman Evans?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilman ready?
Yes, I'd just like to say thank you to the Public Works Department for taking care of all the snow that we had this past. Month or so, we cold season. And we had a lot of snow this this season, 10 inches one day. So I really appreciate the Public Works Department taking care of that and the roads were cleaner than and quicker too, so thank you.
And mother nature took over a week ago, so it's almost gone.
Thank you. I would hope that we don't have any more snow, but I won't make that bet just yet.
Knock on wood.
Too early for that.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
I have, I have nothing except that I'm ticked off, I'm in Arizona. And you guys are having a heat wave and it's not right.
You've got your Iowa State jacket on.
Well, yeah, I'm going to dinner. I had looked at the. Anyway, I thought we were going to have, should have knocked on wood, a shorter meeting, so I've got to run out the door.
Sorry. Councilman Temple?
No comments, thanks.
Okay, well, I don't have anything further to add this evening either, so if there's nothing else for the good of the order. We are adjourned, thank you.
Good guy.
Thank you.